June 20th, 2011, Madison County School Board Workshop. This meeting is officially called to order. Mrs. Miller? How we doing? We have a short prayer by Mrs. Miller. We have a small prayer. First prayer.
Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you that you are here among us. Lord, we thank you that you are the God who makes or wears it when there seems to be nobody. Father, we ask that you be with the school board members tonight as they discuss these issues. Father, we be with the citizens as they share their hearts. And Lord, we just ask that all that we do and say would be in accordance with your will. Father, we want to keep at the center of our focus the children of this district. So please help us, Lord, during these difficult budget times. We thank you and praise you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I declare this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start this meeting out, and this meeting is concerned with budget issues. And what we're going to do is we have to sign in sheets. We have to, people need to talk to us. And we're going to have those people speak to us. You have three minutes to speak. Each person has three minutes to speak. And before we start any discussion of our own, and anybody else can sign the sheet. Because once we start the meeting, signing sheet is over.
Does this question think you held after we did, you call something?
We have one hour. One hour for this budget workshop. It's advertised as one hour.
Okay. I just want to be able to say this question to you. That's where you got signed in.
Okay.
Got something, some clarity?
Yes, sir. That's you, Mr. Royd, here. Okay, we can call now.
I don't have any questions at this time. I'm waiting here. Y'all call first, one second.
Okay. Mrs. Aaron?
Same.
Okay. Now, this meeting is only going to last one hour. Okay. We're going right into budget issues.
At the station, you have a packet, the top sheet says budget summary. This budget summary has, you've seen it, I believe, on two other occasions. And Andy, if you want to just hit the highlights of it, this was a slide that we showed at each of the town hall meetings, and we talked about it earlier. And just briefly.
At the top of the budget summary sheet, you'll see total revenues. And then just below that, you'll see total revenues and fund balance. The total revenues is the amount of money that we anticipate to receive next year, both from state, local, and federal sources. So that's how much money we have to work with. Then if you add in your savings account, which is your fund balance, as well as the job bill, jobs bill funds that are left over, that gives you eighteen million four hundred fifty-four thousand dollars to spend next year. Then there's a summary of your expenditures by object code, salaries, benefits, and so on. The total estimated expenditures for next year is eighteen million two hundred sixty-one thousand, which leaves you an estimated fund balance for the end of next year of a hundred and ninety-two thousand. That's six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars short of what your board policy states. Your board policy states that you have a five percent fund balance, which is eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and you'll have a hundred and ninety-two as it sits right now. So basically, you're six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars short of hitting the fund balance. You will have still over expended your revenues by approximately six hundred thousand dollars just by hitting your fund balance. But that will hit your target for next year.
So on the second page, this is the code sheet, passing around to the county hall meetings. So now we've taken it back as the board requested, and we have added other suggestions from the town hall meetings, and we've tried to calculate the cost of each of these ideas. At the top were the proposed staff cuts from general fund, and the board has already seen that proposal before. And we tried to handle the instructional staff with attrition and retirements and non-recommendations. And then the other, well, basically, the non-instructional cuts, the same way, administrative cuts, and then warehouse delivery man, instead of being out of general fund salary, we moved over to food service, which is the major part that he delivers. So doing all of those proposed staffing cuts saves the district one million four hundred twelve thousand. Question, that part we showed?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
On the external contracts, I listed three examples. The negotiator contract, the policies and procedures contract, and the lawn service contract were done by folks that we contracted with external to the school system. And so if we cut all of our, those external contracts, a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy thousand, sixty-nine dollars would be the savings. We discussed about transportation, redoing three routes and three drivers. This would be the cost of diesel cut plus substitute driver pay for a savings of thirty-six thousand six hundred and forty. Closing the bureau offices and relocating those offices to the XL school would be six thousand two hundred and thirty-three, a savings of six hundred, six thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars, and that's in utilities costs. The activity bus was separated out from athletic supplements, because athletic supplements have to be negotiated. The activity bus cost about twenty thousand dollars. One of the suggestions from the board was reduce district administration by one director and one administrator. That would be a savings of a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars. Restricting travel that's paid from general fund would be about thirty-five thousand dollars. Institute a hiring freeze, and I put the two examples there of the retiring of one maintenance worker and one mechanic. Freezing those positions would be a savings of nine three thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars. Extra days paid for curriculum coordinators at the schools would be nine thousand dollars saving. It was suggested to cut the dean of students' positions at one of the town hall meetings. That would be a savings of a hundred and three thousand seven hundred dollars and eighteen cents. It was also suggested to cut assistant principals, two from the central school and one from the high school. It would be a savings of two hundred and eight thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fourteen cents. Moving the small school administrators to an eleven-month contract from a twill would be a savings of seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars eighty-nine cents. The suggestion was made to privatize the steno and cafeteria service workers. We checked Liberty County, because that's where they had done both, and their savings was about seven thousand dollars per employee for fifteen to twenty percent from their...
From their previous expenditures, if they did fully implement it, they did it two different scenarios. The one scenario was if they did it through attrition as people left, they were rehired by the contracting service. If, or they could come in and basically just take over the whole program, and they said that they, their experience has been about fifteen to twenty percent in savings. That's what they estimated it to be. So that's, that's where those two numbers come from. So if you did it through attrition, it'd be about seven thousand dollars per employee as they left. If you did a turnkey, which is just flipping everything over, you'd save fifteen to twenty percent.
The suggestion was made to move Lee, Hattlet, and Brinville students to the central school. That would be a savings of five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Re-doing the bus routes and organizing bus stops and groups rather than door-to-door, that takes more time, just since last week, to do that calculation, so we don't have a savings on that. Going to a year-round school, depending on which model, would increase the cost of utilities and transportation and staff. Using parent volunteers and yard service, that would be no savings currently. We use existing custodian staff. It was suggested at one of the town hall meetings to reduce the unrestricted fund balance to four percent. That would be no savings, but would reduce the budgetary cuts by a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. On the C restructuring sheet, that is about restructuring the XL school, and I provided a separate sheet for it that had four options. The approximate savings would be a hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars to restructure the XL school. Would you like for me to review the sheet? Okay. All right. Okay. The suggestion was made at the town hall meeting to combine the position of supervisor of transportation and supervisor of maintenance. That would be a savings of sixty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. The suggestion was also made to resign the school district, so student of ten-year home, dependent upon the son. It was hard for us to calculate what the savings that would be. The suggestion was made to reduce the superintendent and board salaries by the same amount as employee salary reduction, and that would be a savings of two thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars and twelve cents. On the next page were other ideas, but all of these must be negotiated within CBA, and so they have to be negotiated in the ABA and not voted on. So you can just see that list there, but it's not really for discussion or vote for the board tonight. I mean, questions, of course, could be asked about it, but it has to be negotiated within CBA. Andy, did you have something to add?
Just in, in a previous workshop, we had kind of built a spreadsheet, not, not this year, but in previous years, we had built a spreadsheet to kind of, if you guys wanted to pick and choose, then the spreadsheet would actually calculate out what the remaining amount would be. And that's actually on the overhead behind you, if y'all wanted to, excuse me, if y'all wanted to use that as a tool. I don't know if that's something that would be helpful, so that you can track what you're actually electing to do.
In other words, as they discuss something and want to see the impact of it, it will show it on the spreadsheet.
Mrs. Royd, I'm requesting to print out of that, which board, so that I can look at it and go without state.
That, this, this is actually the same spreadsheet. It's just, it's basically the summary sheet at the top, which you said. So it's the summary at the top. And then we can print this out when we're finished, if you'd like.
Yes. That's what I'm asking you about.
Once you're finished. So what'll happen is, is it's the exact same thing, it's just that whatever you choose, I would fill in. Like, for example, yeah, I could fill in a number.
For example?
Okay. So we, we have a amount in there. Yeah. So that's the exact same thing. But what I'm saying is, whatever we express, we... You'll get a copy. Yes. That's what I'm asking for.
And so, Andy, can we get back over to this side just a minute? Okay, so what we're showing is right here, we're pulled out, external contracts for a hundred and seventy-three thousand sixty-nine dollars. This XL spreadsheet deducts that from this amount. So down at the bottom, then you see how much more you've got left to put. So as the board discusses things, you can try it out and see what the savings would be.
What's that total that we got, that we decided on, that about five hundred and that, put six thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars?
So I know some of these were a little bit easier for you to decide on than others, and I thought it'd work through them. It'd be helpful to see the running toward the total.
Tonight is a workshop, and so that's pretty important, just discussing.
Right, we'll, we'll be dead this morning.
Right.
So we just leave it up there for now, and then you guys can add it, or we stay here and kind of blow it?
We're not, we're not voting on this. I mean, we would be tomorrow night.
Yeah.
We're going to vote for it or against it.
So you're going to just leave one of them?
Keep running the other or pass it?
So it's up?
We were here, and, and full from the public is limited to three minutes.
I didn't find anything that, y'all feel hard working. We got a couple of questions. Stipends, you remember what stipend is? Two pieces of stipend in our school system. I'll be deal for these stipends.
It would be basically, basically stipends are paid to teachers or non-instructional folks mainly for professional development. If they're not on their normal contract time, the union contract allows for a hundred dollar stipend for a full day for a teacher, or seventy-five dollars for a non-instructional employee for, for a full day outside of the normal contract. And they're, like, a teacher's contract is a hundred and ninety-six days.
Right.
So if there's any sum or professional development, they would get a hundred dollar stipend for that day.
Okay. Both sides of teachers. I can understand a teacher's part. Who else would get received a stipend?
Mainly, I see, the teachers or some non-instructional staff for professional development.
How much, how much could stipends accumulate for, for an individual a year? I've heard, you know, it's just hearsay, so I'm just asking, but I've heard up to six thousand dollars a year.
Not, you're talking about, that would be sixty, the equivalent of sixty days of professional development.
I mean, I don't know. Either way, you mean, is it, is that, is that something that could happen?
Are you talking about stipends with extracurricular activities?
I'm not sure what it is, except the stipends.
Well, most I believe what you're talking about, extracurricular activities, those stipends. So maybe you can ask about Mr. George.
For clarification, I could, I could, the only thing that I could think of that would be costing six thousand dollars would be administrative supplements.
It's for the director.
For the directors, not for teachers or, or support personnel.
That's what it is.
I think, I think that's your question.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So your term, your term, it's a supplement.
Is it, is it a stipend? I guess it's going to talk about.
Stipend?
Stipend supplement.
Okay. So what's the supplement for?
There's a supplement paid to each, well, there's someone paid to each director, and there's also supplements, not to each director, but to three of the directors and one of the assistant principals for nego, for being on a negotiating team. That supplement's been in place, it's actually been reduced. It used to be two thousand dollars per year, now it's fifteen hundred dollars per year. That's basically a negotiating supplement for hours above and beyond the workday to be part of the negotiations and part of the...
Well, are they paid per hour, or are they paid, or is salary paid?
It's salary. It's, it's basically a...
So if I, so if I'm being paid salary, I'm still...
It's not, it's not a salary. It's a supplement. And so it's just an amount of money. It's not your hourly rate, and it's not hour for hour paid. It's not hourly paid. It's just a, it's just a blanket amount, just a set amount that you pay for negotiating with the NCDAT. The district school board negotiates with NCDAT. And so the negotiating team is for, the stipend is for after-hours negotiation. So that's the amount that Andy's talking about. It's not their hourly rate.
Okay. So that's, if they made thirty-five dollars an hour on their average salary, they would be, they would be reimbursed thirty-five dollars an hour on the stipend paid?
No, no. It's just a one-time payment.
Okay.
I mean, it's not even a one-time payment. It's free, but it's all checks.
Just like coaches are paid a supplement to coach football, that's not based on their hourly rate, how many hours they spend at practice. It's just a set amount. It's just a one amount.
Well, now, so how many, how many stipends in this, of this range or this nature would we have total, or anything?
Supplements in the district.
Yeah. For, for these administrators, directors, is what I'm asking.
Oh, for, just, the only ones that I know, for any administrators.
Like an average total, if you was to...
It would be, and that's, I think, where the six thousand dollars comes from. There's four, four administrators, one AP and three directors on the negotiating team. They're fifteen hundred dollars each, so that's six thousand dollars total for, for those four individuals.
Six thousand total for all, or six thousand a piece?
For all.
For all.
Fifteen hundred dollars a piece.
Okay.
Is what that is. So, like Ms. Lou said, it's for added responsibilities beyond what your normal job requirements are. Like a, like a team leader at a school, they get a supplement, or a football coach, they get a supplement just for additional duties beyond their normal workday. And so that's, that's what that's...
That's kind of odd, because I get paid salary by working. You know, you get to take the jog, it's that kind of thing, you know? I don't really believe it should be paid extra. I mean, I just mean, the other question was, XL school, do they run a separate bus for their students? For XL students, students?
During the day, taking the high school students home, we do, and picking up the middle school students. Yes, or under the current configuration, there are separate buses during the day.
And the reason for that is because they may have been charged with filming or been convicted of probation, you want to mix them with regular students?
It's because they're going to have that program. So at midpoint during the day, we actually switch out students.
Okay. Is there any way to get around that, where they run the same route here? If they're good enough to ride regular students that...
They, they do. In the mornings, they ride with the regular students.
It's just afternoon?
No, so it's midday.
Midday.
Around twelve o'clock, eleven to twelve o'clock.
There's no way to adjust that, where there would be a separate bus route?
Under the, there are some suggestions here where they would do a full-day program, and that would put us being able to run all those students on the same bus for the most part.
Okay. Okay. I wish you'd do more about the XL school. I could probably be more informative, ask you some questions, but I said we have twenty-five students, and how many teachers do we have? This is a twenty-five in this option. Is that means going to XL now? How many students do we have in XL school enrolled?
There's all the goals they're speaking to.
Okay, how, what's the average attendance?
We've been running two sessions, a morning session and an afternoon session, and they've been averaging about twenty kids per session, but which would have been forty.
Okay, see, okay. All right. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Hag, I'm good. You're good, thank you. I'm good. Mr. Williams?
Ms. Hag, and thank you, ma'am. For clarification purposes, I think, referring to the gentleman's first question, for clarification purposes, we know that there are, there are stipends or supplements that go to principals and administrators when they make AYP. Is that correct?
Thank you for mentioning that.
Okay.
Part of performance pay, absolutely. Part of performance pay is, in our performance pay system, if the school is an ARB and they meet their goals, then the principal receives a stipend, which is a percentage of their pay. We have to have, the state requires that we have a performance pay plan in place for teachers and their administrators. And so that's, that's what George is referring to, and I appreciate you mentioning it.
How much could that be?
It's five percent of their salary.
Five percent of their salary.
Their salary would be, average salary?
Anywhere from fifty to sixty thousand, depending on the...
So three thousand dollar bonus?
That's about the average.
It could be. Yeah. It could be. Ms. Miller, just for further clarification, Madam Chair, if I may. Yeah. Just for further clarification. So they got the stipends for AYP, if the school makes AYP?
They get the stipend for principal performance pay, which the requirements are, the school has to be an ARB, and I'm not sure if AYP was one of the requirements.
Okay. All right. So, so they have to get it for performance based on an ARB school?
Right.
Okay. Second to that, we do understand that you have the negotiating team. You've already talked about that.
Yes.
My follow-up question would be, are there any other supplements or stipends that district-level administrators or school-level administrators get as a result of them working in the district?
Just the performance pay, the negotiating supplement?
No, unless, unless an assistant principal is a coach, and then they would get the supplement for coaching.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I, the gentleman asked a good question. We want to make sure that it's clarified.
And follow up with the conversation.
And make sure that he is, make sure that he's absolutely...
That was a good part. Madam Chair, it's exciting.
Yes, sir.
Since that's come about, really, it's that performance. And I'm sure there's people here that work in so many places, they get these stipends for work and everything, and I'm not saying they'll do a good job. I talk to the board, the school board here, talking about, we had fourteen teachers. We talk about that kind of, a big deal. You know, maybe, maybe reward off of business, maybe their face on, they still have a good salary, still able to get the reward to get back to their original salary, rather than that fourteen teachers this gives me. And so, so that needs to be looked at wholeheartedly. I understand that, that if I work for, if I work for somebody, they may, they may pay me that salary, I should do my job to start better. You know, if, if the school's doing bad, you shouldn't be, it's almost like you shouldn't get your work for doing better. That's what you're supposed to do. So maybe, I know the rewards there for a reason. I don't think the rewards are worth doing for fourteen teachers. Also, I don't have the stipends, something I had to me, just in my mind, I'm calculating about thirty-six thousand dollars in stipends total, and so I'm thinking about schools, at least one school teacher, and that.
There's no teachers, let me clarify that, it shows cutting national production of staff. There's no teachers losing, you know, losing their, their, their job.
When I said that the cuts, that the instructional cuts, the portion that I have teachers, were handled through retirements, attrition meaning they might have moved away or taken a job somewhere else, or non-recommendation, somebody that the school was not going to recommend back. That's how those cuts were handled.
Well, I understand that. I do. I understand fully that we're not going to say, hey, you don't have a job, you don't have a cover. I understand that. But what I'm saying is, when that person rolls out of that, there's any spot missing. And any spot needs, needs a teacher for children to be able to, I mean, our teachers have it to do already. My wife's a teacher. You'll get somebody a stipend, give them one, because my wife will get home and work at ten o'clock at night, and I know about fires, because she gives you the same thing. And I've heard stuff like, oh, they get all summer off. You know what? They need it all off because they work twenty-four hours a day almost during the year for thirty-seven thousand dollars. So between them and school bus drivers, you're going to find me with a very, very generous heart for them versus somebody else. I'm not saying that so many professionals keep making somewhere else. So many teachers are making somewhere else, too.
Right.
And that's not the point. The point is, is that this is about the children. So I know what you're saying, we're up on fire, and I know, oh, I got a teacher, but we need to replace those places, those people that's going to be missing.
The other, the other thing that we, that the board passes is a unit allocation plan, and we talked about this in the town hall meeting, of class size reduction, where pre-k to three has to have eighteen students per teacher.
Right.
So we figured it, when we figured how many teachers each school would get, we figured all the population, so that we would meet the class size reduction.
We've been reducing, the district has been reducing the staff as a role of the client that we, we have been. We just wasn't reducing it during, during the school year to equal the kids. We would, we would give into our own restricted fund balance in order to let the, let the year play out, but, I mean, we're the thing like it is now.
And probably say one thing, too, is, you know, being relaxed and talking to people, you know, killing people out. You know, I understand that Central School has a lower grade, that their school's grading is not as high as some of these outlying schools. You know, I understand maybe these outlying schools maybe take more students per teacher because of their environment or whatever, but that these other schools need more teachers per student or something, because it's just, I mean, I've got, I've got kids before, I just, I feel bad for the kids, for the students, for the teachers. I mean, and students, too, be honest with you.
Yeah. No, we can't, we can't vary from the class size reduction. So pre-k to three will have eighteen, and fourth grade through eighth grade will have twenty-two.
Right.
So it's twenty-two at Central School, it's twenty-two at Lee, Hattlet.
I'm basically curious what, what the difference is going. You know, for the schools, the different environments, how the, how the kids react. And you really, it's almost got to be, we almost take our best school and have some kind of stay down to us, we can repeat that in another school to have a win, you know, have some winning results there, too.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Jones, if you have something to say. I'm the board's gentleman, who has the board, good afternoon. I would like to ask, please explain to me how a XL school operates. That's what I'm interested in, XL school. If someone explained to me and talks up loud in the ears, though, how the XL school operates.
Can you get a copy of this?
I can.
Do you want that, ma'am?
Okay. Press A on this one. Yes. Yes, I have four options. Yes, I have the option, right. Someone explain it to all these gentlemen how it's going to operate.
We haven't really decided yet, but these are the options.
Oh, these are the, okay, these are the options. And when would you know how it's going to operate? When you're following, we don't follow them.
We're discussing tomorrow, I know you're working, we will be discussing it both of them. Yes, ma'am. These are options, if another, if the board member wanted to do another option. So, these are recommended options.
Yes, yes, yeah.
These are recommended options, if you hear about them.
But, 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 but it-
If a board member wanted to do-
I don't disagree with me.
We can-
How's going to operate? You don't know the specifics.
No, ma'am.
You don't know.
No, ma'am.
You don't know.
I don't.
You don't know. Okay. On, on the reduction of this, we got no specifics, I want that, I want them to pull that through. We all can't get, that's called a super teacher's recommendation. If the board votes on that tomorrow night, then the board votes the positions, then I'm charged with filling the positions. I'd say that if two, if this, if that, if that one guy left them, one of them, if the board vote, vote that, then I would, he would make a decision on what to do. And which one would it be? Thank you.
And, yeah, thank you. Now, here, can I say? Based on, um, looking at your recommendation for the Excel School, I didn't see, uh, where it was a recommendation and that we look at the, um, the program, the Opportunity Center. That was a suggestion that we, uh, look, one of the restructuring, um, options. And I don't see it here, so I, is there a reason why it just wasn't included? Because it was recommended that we look at that, um, the way the Opportunity Center ran prior to it changing to Excel. And I thought we were trying to be-
Well, Mr. Williams, um, and the old Opportunity Center is, it, it just had, you know, one teacher, one parent. Whereas now, when you have kids down there, they have to be, you have to have a teacher that's certified in, you know, math or certified in, in, in English. So, you know, basically to have that teacher, you're going to have to have some form of virtual, you know, a virtual school which has a certified teacher at the other end of it, and then there was somebody to help them. Times has changed as far as the way schools done versus with, you know, the Opportunity Center.
And I, I realize that. Glad you also remember, um, a recommendation for two certified teachers and a parent on our professional option one.
But, um, it was either with ten, but that would be the same model as the Opportunity Center. Because it's a full day, the old Opportunity Center.
Exactly. So, that's, so you're seeing option one is pretty much what? We're looking at it, we're talking about not having it as a standalone school. Is this option for a standalone school like it is now? Or is it going to be phased into one of our existing schools such as the high school with this option?
It's our hope that it would be continued with the elementary school normal.
I, I think, so I, I know that it was a recommendation that not being from, um, some of the, um, people in the community. So, that's not considered. That it felt like that should not be considered in here?
I, I don't understand what that would not be.
Yeah, that it not be a standalone school with its own number. But that it be a part of, um, high school. I just wonder where was that recommended because it certainly must make it-
Yes, ma'am. Can I interject us? For it to be considered, to be still attached to a school, then the school board would need to decide that they didn't want to have an alternative school. Then, with the, the district and the school board, we need to go back and see that the high school and the central school possibly restructure within them to have an Opportunity Center, which would be the opportunity to push those kids out into a separate facility away from those other kids. That, these options were with it remaining as a separate school.
Okay.
So, should the school board, if my opinion, should the school board decide not to maintain it as a separate school, then we would need to go back and possibly consider the recommendation of where they would still be allowed to stay at their home school. The, the issue with that would then be the kids who had, had, um, had a discipline referral and possibly would need to have been expelled. They would not be able to be allowed to stay in their school. That was the case. They, they would need to change school numbers for that to be an alternative place. So, that, this, this was mapped out to restructure the alternative school that's sitting with its same student number. But to do what, the other suggestion would then be if the school board decided not to have the school number at all, and then the central school and the high school would need to restructure to have an Opportunity Center. And then we have to talk about staff for them to accommodate that.
Okay, I, I don't know what, excuse me. Ms. Williams, the fact information that you have, that you just spoke, will you get that to me and write it in the way you can wear a hat as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, um, I still say that, uh, since we were putting together, uh, some of the recommendations from the town hall meeting that was not included, certainly was, uh, suggested. And so, what are the, um, the specifics of how that came about? I think people were brainstorming, like with all of these others, as to how to save money. And that was certainly what in the minds of, um, the public that would be a safe cause for, uh, the school district to, uh, not have an Excel School, and maybe not even call it Excel, to, to, uh, still be separate from, uh, one of the school's sacred, if it was called at the high school. And it still had its own restructure, uh, and to meet these requirements. But it would be a matter for those kids to be, uh, really introduced back into their own classes. Uh, and I was just concerned that, even though it may not be the most viable option, as you're, you just discussed, it would take more, I, I'm assuming you're saying it would take more for the school board to make adjustments if that were something that they considered?
I, I agree.
Uh, maybe I misunderstood what you were saying.
And Mrs. Brown, is this what you're saying, um, option one, and it was discussed? And, uh, option one would give us two teachers in the parent. Okay. And what you're objecting to is the A plus, that we have a credit recovery. That means that children will be just going to school for credit recovery. That doesn't mean that they would be getting a quality education. And, um, the same thing to be incorporated with, the children getting a quality education. They get their work from the school that they come from. They get the work from the school that they come from. That means we don't need a guidance class out there, that position has been cut because the guidance out at other schools will be filtering them in, doing that. The principal at that school will be their principal. And, um, we want a quality education, we don't want just credit recovery. We want, because those children who are in sixth and seventh grade shouldn't be trying to do credit recovery. They need a teacher. They need a hands-on teacher who are going to teach them their regular subjects that they have been taking.
I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
That's what we're talking about. That's what you were saying about quality education.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, it's all about educating the children. And I see we're talking, um, twenty-five, we just used twenty-five students, but we're talking half-days. And which it was recommended full day.
Full day for all students.
So, if it's full day and it's, uh, and right now, and we're saying it's twenty-five half-day and twenty-five half-day, it's fifty-two, just like fifty students. So, if it's full day, wouldn't that be fifty students full day? Because they're saying-
Well, I think it would change because the student, the clarification at the top where it says the type of students, instead of them just being a, um, a truancy issue or something going to Excel.
But isn't-
It would be only people that have felonies and that type going to Excel.
But, um, are, is that any different than what's going right now? These students, is it more than just, uh, truant students or children, uh, students with felonies or students with disciplines? Or are the same ones that's going there?
All of them. All, all children going there now.
Okay, so I-
All children going there now.
So, all of the ones that's listed above? Uh, uh, I'm saying, all of the students that's listed under the restructure are the same students that was sitting there now?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any student that's not listed under here now that would not, uh, be referred in the, with the new option? Is there any addition of type student or-
We have, we had a kid sit up there and she talked about her child who couldn't go to any other school. I forgot her name, it was mistaken.
Uh, yeah, who was a medication.
And her child, he, he didn't, he had an application. And, um, he goes there. He didn't have any problems, anything. He goes there. Six foot two child. And then we talked about, uh, children who doesn't have a discipline refers, they go there for credit recovery or whatever. See, we have credit recovery, that can be on the school campus, and it can be over somewhere in all that too.
Some respect.
Right. And that's what I, that's pretty, so then what I'm saying is, basically, the students that you're referring now would be the same students that you would refer then, but it would be fifty students because we're talking whole day. If you're talking whole day, now we're talking fifty students who would refer even if they were in, um, half-days. I mean, the criteria for the referral has not changed. Am I reading something wrong?
Well, it could vary because some of the kids that was there this, this year will go back to a regular school. It would depend on how many that they, that they, that they sent there.
Right. Well, they would go back because they would have met whatever the requirement was for their-
Right.
You see what I'm saying? So-
You don't really know, you don't really know.
Yeah, and I-
What you don't have.
Yeah, and I realize that. We're, we're talking, it's the matching, we're talking numbers. But I'm talking about the, the gist of, of the whole thing. The students that would be referred, no matter what, would still be the students that's going to be referred if it was a full day, is what I'm saying. Am I correct on that? Yes, ma'am.
Oh, this school, they correct.
Okay. But I'm saying, you were saying, except now, it would be certain students that would not be referred because they didn't fit in this category. Or if all students fit in this category that we have missed. Is, I mean, that's referred to Excel. Is that not true?
I don't know, but I don't see why Excel has to have a separate school number. Those, the students at Excel School, that goes to Excel School, they are not under, they're not children. My upgrades can't come down, no fault, they're what the school grades are now, because school grades, all the school grades are messed. And if those children at Excel School didn't do what they're supposed to, and they did what they were supposed to do, the school grades couldn't drop down, they're fucked. School grades are messed.
I, okay.
All Excel didn't have. Rebuild, the central school, the high school, school grades are messed. They would not bring the school grade down.
Okay. And I guess I really want to make my point, and I hope I, I can make it in this next few minutes. The sixty-one hundred dollars is what, uh, the Excel student gets. That's what, uh, the state sent you for that student.
Every student.
But every, that's what I want to make sure. So, we're still looking at what the student, and we're not talking about this outrageous number that, um, Excel students was getting, uh, that was causing the deficit. We're talking about a child that's getting regular FTE, whatever their amount. So, that's sixty-one hundred dollars per student.
They, I know, they-
It does matter. So, that's every student. So, now, give or take a little, that would be maybe, uh, twelve thousand dollars. If it's fifty students, uh, going full-time and, I, I don't like the word Excel because I think we keep getting caught up with that Excel because y'all have a limited, um, concept of Excel. So, that makes you kind of think negative about it anyway. So, we're talking really fifty students. That would say, um, fifty-two students, you're talking twelve thousand dollars in full day. However, how much that would be twice that again, twice would be that all year.
It's not twelve thousand.
Well, I mean, if it's sixty-one hundred, oh, well, whatever. I, I mean, it would be fifty students times sixty-one hundred, whatever amount that would end up being.
No matter how many students were there for it, to stay within the budget, it has to operate one of the-
And this is what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about anything outside of what, does each student get sixty-one hundred dollars? So, I'm saying that if you were talking in full day, for the students that attend this, uh, separate school, getting the same FTE that all other students that's at high, central, rebuild, they kind of getting, it would still be fifty students at that amount. Full day, six thousand dollars.
What if they, what if some of them would like to operate? See, you got, remember now, these kids started at another school.
Exactly.
So, when, when they move from there-
They're not coming again.
Correct. So, you know, it's sixty-one hundred dollars that you, that they generate. So, I mean, if they, if they at that school for so many months, then see, you, so you can't just use the total of sixty-one hundred dollars.
Which, right. But they'd be operated if it was still in that. Well, which supports my argument even the more because then, if it's at the school where the principal is, I don't know what the, what's, what the ratio is, um, high school student versus middle school students.
Twenty thousand, twenty-two.
Okay. So, then, if that's what it is, would you be able then to figure how much? Okay, the middle school, you know, what, twenty-two times, uh, sixty-one hundred? I don't know if that's the way you keep doing that, I, I just-
Here it is there, here's what's true, here's what facts. Even if they get six thousand, what's other dollars? Even if they go there for a happy year, you know what I'm saying? For half of that money, three thousand, fifty dollars, you know, if they're at Excel School. Still fifty times, three thousand dollars is what, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're calling in the framework.
At least all of them.
And the budget, and the budget framework.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. So, these options, even what I'm saying, either way, we are within, uh, we're educating the students, like we're educating all the other students.
And we want some to have a part of education.
Yes. Versus, uh, I think at one of the talk, I'm going to be allowing to all of them, uh, talk about the J D Center service. And I'm not for that at all, um, period. And, uh, and I agree that the, uh, credit recovery, that's something that should be, uh, available to students at any school that they attend. Um, I think it should be, this is my, my personal opinion, right?
And it is.
So, then it's not, uh, necessary, so this is not a plus for, so then if you restructure Excel to be a part of a school that already exists, because how can it keep its own number? And then you don't have a principal, how you gonna, who's going to be over that? And that's the savings. So, you know, that's my point.
I don't know if I can keep it with the school that already exists. If you have felons at the school, and then maybe someone against a student there at the school. That would be my concern.
They're going to be on the same campus.
No, no, no. We're not saying put them on the same campus.
They're people in that building, not on the same campus.
But how can you be-
Under, under the principalship of, for instance, I'm just going to give an example. If we went back, and this is just me thinking, I'm not an educator, I'm just looking at all of this from every perspective, to put this school, uh, say, at the high school, I don't know, you know, I don't know if y'all caught up with, um, buildings and semantics and all that kind of stuff, I don't know. Um, but if they were still on, for instance, under the, uh, separate, not the super teacher, but the principal at the high school, but yet they were set in a separate, whatever, with their teachers and their paraprofessionals and that kind of thing, doing the same work that they would have been getting in their normal classrooms, but because of whatever the reason, they can't be there for a period of time, but they're still getting the same level of work, the same work, not just some busy work or some non-educational. I don't see it as non-educational, but, uh, it's not, I'm saying, level of quality. It would still be under a principal, students still be away from your mainstream, but then they will be, um, to be able to integrate back into the mainstream much easier. That's just my-
I've asked that same question.
Yeah.
We have five minutes long, Brown wanted to speak.
If I, can, can I ask, to clarify, Miss Walter, and, and, and let me see if I, because I asked the same question. You, you, you know, I see what you're talking about. And basically, years ago, that's the way it was, but I don't, I know it works with the way the- I know it works with the way DOE is now, if you say you forgot a kid at the high school and he's taking English or the courses he's taking, I think for that credit, big credit has to be a certified teacher teaching that. I don't know, I don't know if DOE would accept the fact that the material come from the certified English teacher over to alternative second that that teacher delivered, is that a possibility?
Credits are given because the teacher is providing the information just for the work to go there for the student to do independently or assisted by someone.
Assisted by.
Not by that certified teacher, I don't know that that credit could be awarded if it turned out that it needed to have been for the whole year.
That's, that's the question.
That is the.
See, that certified teacher would not have provided the instruction, they would have only provided the papers, they would not have provided the instruction. So, you would then be asking the teacher to sign saying that they had given, that that child had earned that credit, when in fact they had not provided the instruction.
But, Ms. Julia, before Tuesday, that's the answer that I need before I start on this, is if, if the material come from the high school or Central School, from that teacher providing, and then another teacher that might be certified in social studies or whatever, but they're, they're delivering that, that work to that student, then I don't know if that credit is still, it still be used.
Okay, one, I know I got one more, I know, can I just add one more? Yeah, certainly the same thing, I promise I'm gonna sit down. So, then, are the certified teachers at both the Excel, but I hate that name, not certified?
They are certified, they're certified.
In another, they may be certified in another area. But, see, that's, to me, that's the problem right there.
And you would call the problem of education yourself tomorrow, get some information on this, they'd be not. Yes, sir, Ms. Brown? We have, you have two or three minutes, you're gonna close this hour.
Is there any way you can reduce the five percent fund balance? I mean, you know, if you can reduce that, then you don't have to have as much deficit as you have now, am I right?
Correct.
Request that to be reduced.
That's one of the things, yeah.
And you can reduce it considerably, considerably, you know, you could have, that's a state code right there.
The state requires three.
The state requires three. And you might not, you might get away from that, but the terms begin the way they are. You might get away with you the principal.
Can I add one thing to that? Is that, that's a, that's a, that's a good suggestion and it's a valid suggestion, it's a very short-term fix, because next year, remember, your target really is to get under that seventeen million dollars of revenue that you're, that you're generating. You can't continue to spend more than you bring in, otherwise you're, you're, you have a very short life expectancy if you do that. So, but that is, that is a valid point and it is up for consideration.
Now, looking at the additional cuts here, your external contracts, you reduce student administrator by one director, you answer to an hiring freeze, you'll cut the dean-student position, cut the system principals, use, anyway, you've got way over that amount you can cut. I'm trying to say that if you can do that continuously and your revenues remains constant and consistent, then you have profits off there without touching the schools. But I think when you start moving Lee and Parnetta and these schools, you create a division within the community, you start this with Excel, you create a vision, when you create a vision, you get nothing done properly. Now, you got enemies all over the county, people that, you know, don't like you, you better not even come to that school, they don't even ask you. You know, so, so people like the economy of having their own place to go to school and they like to be able to drive up to that school anytime they want to. Now, you know, I, I'm coming back to this, Excel, I was at high school in Massam, and I was looking at it, and I said, my God, there are seven students that crossed that line that were former Excel students. And I said, that's a good thing, because if we had kicked them out and said, hey, you expelled because you don't like Mr. Joe Blow over here, and you called him a name, and we're gonna expel you from school, then, you know, now you got a problem. Now, you got an internal problem that not only messes with the school system and the community, but it affects the police system, they gotta hire somebody. Then you get the indentured care people, they gotta, city clerk's gotta go back, now you got a hell of a, then you got SSI paying the five hundred dollars a month because they don't have a job and they can't do any better. I'm saying you get one student and it costs you a quarter million dollars over his lifetime just to keep him viable, living and breathing. Now, if you take ten of them, we had three also from Excel to finish North Florida Community College, they went through, so I know they there, I was there for eight years and I know, and I'm a very good judge of people, we had some students with some very good potential. All they needed was love and motivation and a good teacher, that's all they needed and they would have missed. We definitely need to probably work on some character issues, yes, but poverty brings about bad character issues. You poor, you hungry, you don't, you've got some bad, you mean all the time, you don't wanna take nothing if you come to school and you don't feel good, you know, so you ain't living right, you don't have any clean clothes and no money. So, you know how it is, poverty is a disease, I wrote it in my doctoral dissertation, and I had a time trying to convince them, they finally said, you're right, poverty is a disease, it will spread all over the place. So, what I say to you is that we need a place where we can put students that are a little disruptive and maybe, and gotten behind. A plus, you know, you got a kid that can't read, he's four grades behind, he don't know any math, you give him a computer, he still can't read, you need a solid, good teacher in the classroom, teach him basics, basic math to get it, because it's a sequential discipline, it's a sequential discipline, you have to have the basics. Reading, you gotta read for comprehension, you just can't sit up there and say, well, what, and say, what did you read? Well, I don't know, what is the main objective? I don't know, what is the officer's point of view? I don't know.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Brown. We're sorry that you put a chance, but we sure did catch the point, thank you everybody. Thank you.